That was the hearing.
It's not coming.
Unbelievable.
Yeah, that's just.
What was the young lady who testified? She wrote a book.
Yes.
Oh, they turned it. Who? Jesus hour.
Yeah. Very curious.
All right. We're about a minute away. We'll talk talking about politics.
So.
Thank you for the update from from your meeting. Mark you.
Yeah, for sure.
So, yeah, absolutely.
I wish I had.
That was good.
It's, um.
You're logging on.
Oh, yeah.
What's up? You're logging.
Coming in hot.
Keith, are you ready over there?
Aye.
And I don't sure if there's anybody that.
There's nobody on yet.
Contacted us to be on Zoom, but. I've officially called this official first meeting of March, Melbourne City Council order. First item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And you have a chance to look at it. Is there any changes recommended by staff? Otherwise. Move approval. Mr. Scott, this is second.
Second.
Paul, move and second to move approve the agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Communications. Anyone here to speak to any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda? Not seeing any. This is appropriate time to talk about how we'll deal with the agenda. Bring public hearings for alleged, or will we get to that point?
Uh, probably. Wait until it's kind of semi listed on it.
Nothing in the communications section. We'll go to the four items on the consent agenda. Any questions of staff or move forward with that?
I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second? Do I go? All right. Move and second to move forward with the consent agenda. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to ordinances. Page two twenty, twenty twenty four A. Maybe you can't wait to play on. There's just there were nothing. No, I.
Now, this is again, it's just a fire station. Any regulation, but more fit what a fire station would be. The only thing I would ask is. Now that there's a full group tonight, if you consider waiting this and moving to the third final.
I'd move to move the second reading.
I'll say it.
Moving second to move the second reading of this particular ordinance. And this is a roll call vote.
Turner.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
And second reading has been approved. And did I catch you want to move forward on the third reading?
I.
I will make a motion to proceed to the third reading.
I'll take Steph and Paul on that then. If that's okay. For the third reading. Two twenty four A. Moving second to put this to a vote, I guess, roll call again.
Andreessen.
Yes.
Turner.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Engel.
Yes.
And then motion carries.
Just out of curiosity, is there? What's the impetus behind wanting to move?
They have a sign that they want to construct.
Gotcha.
And designing is the last. So they, I want to say they submitted it close to here one month ago. And they're just waiting on this zoning classification change to get to that. It's one of those, I think they've been talking about it for like two or three years. Finally, they got.
Actually, since 2011 when the station opened, but seriously talking about it.
They finally got a design, I think everybody is good with. So they're like, let's hurry up and get it done.
So after, so for 12 years, two weeks, it's really like, just put them right over the.
You can't watch these things.
No, we can't. All right, that's fair. That's fair. All right, just curious, thank you.
This is the topic of planning, it's already meeting last Wednesday.
Uh, no, they didn't end up having a quorum last.
It was on the agenda though, but they didn't.
The sign?
Yeah.
Now it was C H I.
It was. They got a quorum, great. It's moving on to old business. I think we need to move on table, I one.
I move.
Start.
On table. I one.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Mark here. Move the second to on table. I have I one, people cigarette license. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and now discussion about the smoke shop in Bay. Palmer Greaves building. In front of them, I want you to.
So I put in my report that there's currently no code that really allows you to put a hold on this. And they submitted before you could consider a moratorium and such. Doug and I both reached out to Cassie and let her know about that information. And she's willing to share research research on. These types of establishments and what's being done around the country that you could consider now that the second one has has come in. And I think she'll. She'll continue to work through Doug and then get the ordinance that you could consider. You can also approve a moratorium.
That was going to be my question. Right now, if somebody, if somebody walked in the door tomorrow with another application, we still don't have any.
So if the if the council. Is genuinely concerned and wants to adopt a new ordinance, kind of. Putting more requirements on these types of establishments, you could, at the next council member, next council meeting. Establish a moratorium on any new, per se, a period of six months while you consider. Additional codes.
What is the wellness coalition? It used to be R C Rail.
Yes.
Nonprofit.
We're still. They're gone by many hands, Craig.
It's a federally funded grant based nonprofit that operates. So there's a lot of coalitions that work in Cedar Rapids community and everything doing the same work, but they tackle the rural Lynn County side of things. So that's why they're based here and cover the central city of Springville, Center Points and different aspects from there on, different. Substance abuse, alcohol related issues. They work directly in schools for good conduct policy issues and adopting processes and working with kids on. Decision making and rehabilitation and different different programming like that.
I want to say my first year, Craig, we, uh, they were the organization that brought forward the tobacco free parks.
Yep.
So it's just helped the communities.
We did that in person.
Yeah. So.
Do they still have space out at the.
They do. Please confirm. Yep.
When it's not full of dust.
It still is. It's still full of dust.
In fact, the superintendent, Pam Yule. Acquired that program and was housed in the district office, current middle school for several years until they outgrew that space. And we had space for them, so they're an hour rental of ours.
The timing was good. They actually operate, I believe, two or three separate grants. It kind of comes and goes. So that'll increase staffing and then as the grant runs out, they'll, it'll fluctuate around with what they're doing, so. They're good partners.
Cassie's been on forever. I know that second or third spot has rotated several times.
Cassie took over director not a couple of years ago when Erica left. And then, yeah, they're just kind of filling in from there. They got three current staff members.
She is a Melbourne and homeless. I'm not sure of her maiden name, but.
Cassie Bragg.
Cassie Bragg.
Oh, okay.
It's a very.
Yep. Dan Bragg's daughter.
Class of two thousand and six.
There you go.
Good year, huh?
Are you serious? Like, you actually think that?
Uh, yeah, she's a class.
That's my son George.
I thought you were kidding. I'm like, wow, this is.
He's the rain man.
I was gonna say.
You want to go down that road?
No.
Paul is a bit of a savage.
A little bit.
Do you know what class that is?
Oh, I. I do want to say that regardless of what happens tonight, I would go on next time. And I do want to voice support for a moratorium because I think it is important for us to consider these things. I really appreciate the materials that Cassie signed. Honestly, I did not realize there was no age on it.
There's no regulating.
No, yes.
I don't think I received any materials from.
I wonder if she's not.
Was it two weeks ago or did I know that?
They came from Doug.
Yeah.
I may have, I'm just.
Yeah, there's some good content.
Okay.
Yeah, there's.
I can read, I'll resend it to you, Craig. I got it.
Yeah, there were good materials and there are some model ordinances.
Yeah.
Probably should act early.
I would. Go ahead.
Probably should act early quick because I know there's a storefront coming open in June, I believe, down town, so.
Yeah, I would say at the next meeting, you can, you can place a moratorium on there and just do it for six months. And then if you want to extend it six months, you can do that again.
And now Paul.
I would move approval of the cigarette license for the smoke shop in Bay.
Thank you, Paul. I would second that. That's great. Moving second to move forward with the smoke shop in Bay. A cigarette license. There's no other discussion. Ready to vote on that? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Questions for approval, first items of claims list that Marcia set up this afternoon. Questions of Marcia on the most recent submission? I would move to approve the claims list. Thank you, Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
And Scott. No questions. Vote on the claims list. All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Pay application number fourteen of police station. Something got reported here.
I very much appreciated the second line in that. In that clip report, Sepia got an interesting final walkthrough.
You have seconds.
Theoretically. Yep. Uh, with that being said, unless there are further questions or concerns, I would approve the pay application fourteen for the police station renovations in the amount of fifty thousand nine hundred and sixty one dollars and twenty three cents.
Scott, is there a second?
Second.
I'll take Mark here, yes. I did go through there a couple of days ago and saw three different work, two different contractors working there, so. Plus our, all the work staff is out there on the projects, so a lot of activity out there. Which, as everybody knows, Mark fifteen, Mark fifteen is kind of. Moving second to move forward, pay application number fourteen. Police station, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Discussion consideration of tip. Reverse, please. Pay application for Stover, phase one. And we'll need to act on each one of these individually, is that correct?
Correct. Each one of the individual phase. I don't have anything. See, outside of the Excel spreadsheets for each of these, but basically. The sheets that I don't give you are a calculator. I actually have to go through. Each subdivision, each phase, pull up the value for that particular year. Log them in a, another spreadsheet. And then. Show basically how. How much value that would be for increment that given year. Maggie from Spirit Financial gives us, gives us the. What would be the TIP eligible levy rate? So that's what you see. In that, in that third column. So you'll see the fluctuation.
Let me, I'm eligible for two, we go.
Yep. So, and then. You, you get the total value for two of these phases. Phase one of Stonerock and phase one of Spring Meadow Heights. In the development agreement, we, we specified that they had to cover the cost of. Our bond attorney putting the agreements together. So that's why you see a deduct there on both of those phase ones and not on the rest of them. And then it's just a matter of calculating how much goes into our loan and modern income and how much goes back to the developer. So. I'm, I'm actually quite impressed, to be honest with you, that. For all of these phases, they look like they're. On, on task and enjoying the main fair number, which is not usual, especially in residential. The nice part about that, there's two or three that would be, would reach that, that outcome in like phase or in year five. That just means that all of that rolls off, that entire phase rolls off and back on the tax rolls that much sooner, so.
Is it just a valuation thing or the?
No, so we capture the entire value now as it relates to our, our debt capacity and what we can do there. But the money is that go back into the general fund. All of that is captured while the active development agreement or the active phases there, but they have. So up in this corner, you'll see a max dollar amount. When they reach that number, then that phase is done.
Okay, so they, they can reach that in year one where your ten doesn't.
Correct.
All, the difference is the sooner they reach it, the value of those property.
Be quicker, yes, all of those homes. So for instance, Spring Meadow Heights has an opportunity to meet it in the next two years. All thirty some homes then, once it's met, fall under tax. And that will be, then you'll start to see a significant bump.
Sure.
In our taxable value, not in our overall value.
Great. Okay.
That's what they're designed to do. I always cringe a little bit because they don't always do it. But yeah, I would say that the developers have been pretty diligent in getting the, the phases done. I, I've said this before, but I think Stonerock is probably going to finish. Phase five, which would be seventeen all the way up to third and the cul de sac coming off of third. He does have an additional ten acres that he purchased just to the less of that, but he hasn't bought it at all, but. If he puts that infrastructure in, that would open, I think, thirty. Thirty some lots and then that, that subdivision would be done. Spring Meadow Heights taking a little. I would say a more calculated approach. They're just doing each loop end of year. But definitely building houses.
And they've got streets light up before concrete.
Yeah, yeah.
So market playing. After the Cottonwood project is. What is our balance in L M I funds?
So it's hard to say what is going to take three hundred and ninety five thousand of that for sure. The seven hundred and fifty thousand that you're set to borrow. Can either be repaid with TIP or L M I, depending on what you choose to do. I would probably suggest to you L M I, but. I don't know of any other L M I projects that are waiting in the wings. So it'd be kind of up to this council what they decide to do.
There's how many units in Cottonwood?
Thirty.
It's great to see those L M I dollars.
Yeah, it's definitely what it's designed to do. Lori and I have a meeting with the developer Wednesday. Where we're just going to throw some ideas out that then have some conversation. So more to come on that, but I would. It didn't give you the option. To use L M I or TIP on, on that portion, so it's really up to you. But three ninety five is, three hundred and ninety five thousand is spoken for.
Do you guys have any idea what kind of pricing those are going to end up at for the consumer?
They look market rate because they have to establish.
Yeah.
A rate. And then there's so much, so much that's eligible for a voucher. I haven't seen the actual rate sheet yet.
So the deal is they might look similar in price to others. It's just that, that, that voucher is eligible, that's going to help bring the.
Yeah, so they, they went through and they made a guidelines for all of their tax credits. And then they're allowed to. Get a portion of that through a voucher.
Okay. But the first test.
I would move approval of the TIP reimbursement certification for Stonerock, phase one.
Second. Thank you, Scott. Ready to vote on that. Motion for approval, discussion consideration of the TIP certification for Stonerock, phase one. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Stonerock, phase two. I would move to approve the TIP reimbursement certification, Stonerock, phase two A. Thank you, Craig.
Second.
So no further questions? Ready to vote? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I will move to approve the TIP financing reimbursement certification for Stonerock, phase three.
Stephanie, is there a second?
Second.
Is, I know we're pushing through fast, but are there any other further questions? I don't want to give up any opportunity for people to address it. Ready to vote on phase three of Stonerock? Yep, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Spring Meadow Heights, phase one.
I would move approval of the TIP reimbursement certification for Spring Meadow Heights, phase one.
Thank you, Scott. Just there, a second, Paul. Spring Meadow Heights, phase one. Ready to vote on that motion? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, Spring Meadow Heights, phase two.
I would move to approve the TIP reimbursement certificate for Spring Meadow Heights, phase two.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Stephanie. Ready to vote on Spring Meadow Heights, phase two. Certification, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to change order for the Davis Park lighting project.
So Steph actually approved this. This change order is an amount of two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and forty eight cents. We don't have an outlet anywhere near the vacuum cage. And of course, they all use. Pitching units that require power. So we have a contractor place an outlet in the closest pool out there so that we're not going to drop. Drop. Courts all the way back to the bathrooms.
That was the right thing to do. Change order number two, twenty six twenty eight cents, forty eight cents. I would move to approve change order number two, Davis Park lighting project in the amount of two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and forty eight cents. Sorry. And Paul. Move the second to move forward with the change order number two of the Davis Park lighting project. No other questions? All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Budget related items for discussion. Let's move here for twenty four twenty five budgets.
Well, this is the fun part of the night. I, I really have two things. I've alluded to them in a, a, an email as well. Although my email, I, I went back and read it. I need to restate it. I meant to say there would be an additional five percent in sewer for a total of eight percent. Sewer and water increase each July by three percent, not five. So. Here is kind of the stark reality of I've held off on trying to do an increase. Beyond the three percent. Number one, we got hit with COVID and then we got hit with derecho, we changed garbage. So we're just trying to hold off as long as I could on sewer and water. But we have a. We have a test that we have to meet in order to have bonds outstanding with sewer, basically a purity test. And it's so that we, we basically prove every year that we have enough money coming in to cover the bond payments. I was trying not to do anything beyond the three percent. But three things are, are making it impossible. Number one, we have a bond that says two thousand nineteen, but it was actually from like two thousand and eleven. Goes until twenty twenty nine. Might even go before that, but we refinanced it in twenty nineteen. So when you look at your bond sheets, it's the first, this is the first column, but that was a refinance. It wasn't when the bond were actually sold. That two point two five million is actually split between water and sewer. So waters are both paying, that bond paid in. Of course, when I got here a year after, we had to go ahead and. Start fulfilling our requirements for our new permit, which is state mandated. We did phase one, it was about one point eight million dollars of that. At the time. A council member, we, we're going to do corrections to both clarifiers, one for each phase. And at the time, the motion was made to do it for both. But we used the cash that we had in order to do that. It wasn't part of the original borrowing. S R F will only allow you to. Once you establish what you're going to borrow, you get an X percent that you can go above that, but you can't go beyond with them without amending your application. So we could just go back to them and say, hey, we have another hundred and eighty five thousand dollar correction that we need to do and add. So we took cash that we had. Which obviously bought down sewer revenues quite a bit. And then inflation. Inflation's at eight percent and all of the items that we were, were paying for are, well, for the last year and a half prior to. The latest numbers, right, eight percent and then three percent increase, obviously, we're going to match that. So all of that coupled with the fact that we have another phase of one. I'm going to say one and a half to one point eight million dollars left to do for the nutrient reduction portion of this. And we get to today. Nobody in my, my seat wants to sit here and recommend significant changes. I know I'm very positive of the fact that Alliance Energy just asked for another rate increase of like fifteen to eighteen percent as well. So I, I do think I can hold off on water and keep that up to three percent for a couple more years. But we could be in the same boat with water two years from now. Given the fact that we're going to do the, the meter change out. So you take all of that and my recommendation is, is going to be eight percent in sewer for the next two years and then reevaluate after that.
Eight percent for sewer for the next three years?
Uh, two for sure.
So three plus five?
Yes.
Okay.
Three is a possibility, three years is a possibility, but the next two are going to be.
I know it varies widely for the citizens of Mount Vernon, but what would be the average sewer cost per month for a family? Twenty five dollars? Thirty five dollars?
I would say, so an average family of four. Probably between water and sewer is about ninety, ninety ish.
Well, that's kind of what ours is there, so let's say.
Are you including garbage?
No, so if you include garbage and everything, it's, I mean, an average family of four is probably paying about a hundred and twenty to a hundred and probably a hundred and forty.
So let's say forty dollars for sewer. A third of that. And so for every percent is, is four dollars. Right? So that.
I heard, no, it's. Percent is four dollars.
Excuse me, ten percent is four dollars.
So this would be an increase of.
Forty cents.
Three fifty. Seventy five.
Yeah. Thank you for the math. Oh, it was an English major.
But you're right to think of it this way. It's the way that person is.
Yeah, and so for the, for, for each house on average per year, we're talking about three dollars and fifty cents per month. So that's going to be about forty bucks a year on average. Okay. A lot less than a white.
It is. So here's the other, here's the other issue, and, and I don't want to downplay this. The changes that are being made with property tax, the rollback and all of that stuff are definitely putting more pressure on the enterprise ones because I have to move funds out of the general fund in order to keep operations the same. And, and I've already gone, I will tell you that I told all of the department heads that from here until the end of this fiscal year, funding is going to be limited. Out of the general fund, just to keep that balance up. And we, we dipped into our reserve. Again, eight percent inflation plus changes, the way that we just, there's no way to make that up. So.
No, no, it's the reality. What's the possibility? I'm curious what council would think. I wanted to noodle here for a second. Of if this is going to be five percent a year for the next two years, so three percent was going to be the, the increase. And now you're talking an additional five the next two years. So that's ten percent the next two years. What about spreading that out to be three point three three percent over the next three years? So it's a little bit less of a bite.
So the only challenge.
Stretch it out.
Yeah, the only challenge with stretching it out is. Yeah, the only challenge with stretching it out is trying to meet that test. So as part of this, I can tell you, as part of all of this, I'm moving, I'm going to recommend moving all of the monies out of our depreciation accounts back into their operating account. So.
So we can shut the balance there, basically?
Yes. Because it doesn't make any sense to have, you know, 18,000 sitting in a sewer depreciation vehicle account when we don't have a vehicle plan to be purchased, number one. And two, it's just hanging out there. The same thing with the water treatment plant. I'm going to recommend that we take the money from the water treatment plant depreciation account and actually move it to sewer to beef up that, that reserve. So.
This is outside of the reserve that you, you and Lori already have.
Yeah.
Which, and I wasn't here two weeks ago, but I was, when I was looking at the minutes, it said that we were going to, our new revenues in this next budget year would exceed new expenses by 2.5 million dollars.
Yeah, now we will be borrowing 4.5 million, so that, you know, the sheet's going to look really good this year. It'll look really good until we start doing those projects. And that's, you know, that's the challenge. We're not, we are not broke and we're not facing cuts, which is always a positive. We are feeling the pinch that everybody else is, and we need the new money back into those accounts to make sure that they stay fairly robust, but.
And you were, you were being more polite about it earlier than, than I would like to be. I mean, what we're looking at here honestly is at the state level, them reducing the amount that we can tax. With the rollback, the amount of that taxable revenue that we can receive. And mandates to, and I'm not saying that public drinking water isn't an important thing, but it's a classic unfunded mandate. You've got to go do this. They're not going to give you the money to do it, and we're going to reduce the revenue of the year and bring it.
So the way I would put it is that our current legislature and governor is making changes to the system to allow them to tell taxpayers that they're giving them a break in every way, shape and form they can, while pushing down on the local level those costs and expenditures to be able to provide the services we've always provided. And the public is going to, you know, say, oh, our legislature and governor are cutting our taxes while our cities and counties and schools are raising our taxes. But they're not allowing us to, you know, basically provide the services at the level we have.
And we have to, we have to dig into our reserves in order to do this.
And beyond that, they're mandating we provide specific services. Again, not saying that we shouldn't, but.
Well, then I'll take it a step further that, you know, tax cuts, for tax cut's sake, are, you know, somewhat of a Wizard of Oz thing, if you will. Because I can, I can sit here and say, oh, I'm, I'm, I'm the great Oz and I'm cutting your taxes. Yet what about my road that my city can't afford to fix? Because instead of investing the surplus that they quote unquote have that will allow these tax cuts, instead of investing what we've already paid into our communities, creating jobs, helping with the quality of life, and providing the basic services that we have come to expect, they're taking the credit for fool's gold, is what it is. That's what it is. And we, this is not the first or only time Chris will be having this discussion with us. And we're in a very fortunate situation in the city of Mount Vernon to be in a position to weather this storm. And there are small communities in rural Iowa, in every county, that some of them are going to.
They've got way harder decisions.
I mean, there's, there's communities, you know, let alone trying to get people to run for mayor or, or city council, but they're not going to be able to meet the mandates, and they're going to shut certain things down, and they're going to unincorporate. Now all of a sudden, it'll become a county issue. And I just feel very strongly that, you know, that message has to be said. So the community and the taxpayers need to understand the shell game that is occurring at the state level. And when they have concerns about an increase in sewer greater than what we want to do, they shouldn't be calling us. They should be calling their state representatives and state senators and saying, why are you forcing this down? Why don't you keep things the same? Because the little bit I'm getting back in a tax cut means nothing to me when I'm already paying that.
Well, I think the challenge, you know, I think the challenge that myself and my colleagues have right at the moment is we would agree that property valuations, the property tax system, it's, it's not a perfect system by any means. And in some people's houses did increase by 70, 80, $90,000, you know, with this last reassessment. So fix that. I think it's the jump from zero to a $90,000 increase is where we really needed to fix. But yeah, we're going to, you know, the county is going to send out postcards to all of the community members with their particular tax on it and how much it was affected this year. But I would preface some of those things by the fact that, yeah, your tax bill might go down, but it's probably because there was a 9% decrease in rollback, not because of the property tax cuts that were proposed by the legislature. So, and then there's others. I mean, I think we, everybody in this community has been a strong supporter of our police department and the individuals that choose to serve. But as I told Representative Golding, you know, some of the unforeseen ramifications of bills like Back to Blue have also increased, you know, our level of funding, I mean, what we're expected to fund. It's driving up wages and assuming a lot of things. Not that any of that didn't need to happen, but you've got a perfect storm going on right now where you're trying to cut costs are going up and, and, yeah, we're, you know, even, I would say, even at 8% for the next few years, as far as sewer is concerned, there are other communities that are facing 20 and 30 million dollar fixes to, to meet the state requirements. We were, we're lucky to walk away with about 3.5 million, at least till the next permit comes to you. But yeah, it's, you know, it's a challenge. I was, like I said, I was really, really hoping that 3% was going to make it. That was probably prior to the last year and a half worth of expenses just skyrocketing as well. So from an operation standpoint.
Well, 5% on average of $40 is a lot better than 25% on 40 or 5% on 400.
Well, the fact that we're only doing, I mean, not only, but, and we haven't said yes yet, but on sewer, which is only half of that bill, so at least for now.
Yeah, and, you know, while I appreciate Craig's thoughts on, on spreading apart, I think that sometimes we, we shorten ourselves and the community by doing that and not getting things taken care of and, and protect ourselves financially on a front-loaded basis. You know, there are certain things where it's better to front-load and, and, you know, be able to back off more quickly than it is to try to spread it out and, and, you know, extend the pain, if you will.
We are going, I guess the, the other alternative is we start looking at service cuts. I mean, that's, there's a cost of doing business. There are things like, you know, the $30,000 a year that we have to pay to remove the sludge out of our system. You know, that's required of us to do. There's only two individuals that work in sewer and water. So it's not like that, that department is overloaded with employees. We've, we've only added, I want to say, four FTEs, maybe five, in the last eight years that I've been here. And we opened the LBC, and we joined forces with Lisbon on a police department. Like, we're already doing everything that we can with a minimal amount of employees. And we've, we've, I feel like we've been efficient, reaching out across a, an invisible line with the cities of Lisbon and trying to figure out how do we work together to be successful together. We have a great relationship with them, and I'm thankful for that. But yeah, I'm, I will be anxious to see the next five years as some of this starts to bite smaller communities that see Little Tenno Grove and how that affects their operation. I hate to say, and even in my profession, there's our, I don't want to say a mass exodus, but there's a lot going across the border to Minnesota because they don't have to necessarily contend with what's going on right now.
Even in my profession, it's not just yours.
Yes.
So there's no action on this?
No, I just, you know, I give an opportunity for the, the newspaper to print an article about this. I will say that I probably will not wait till July 1 on, on this change. It'll probably be closer to April when the rest of the budget is coming, coming forward. Just to show the final audit numbers for, for us. But yeah, I mean, it is, it kind of is what it is. I don't necessarily want to recommend it, and for those asking, yes, I do pay it too. So I'm not looking forward to adding a percent to my bill either, but.
Fresh my memory, but didn't both the UV program of the sewer plant, which is done here for, and the second one, the Nutrient Reduction Act, weren't these DNR additions basically unfunded mandates?
Yeah, so we, we have an operating permit through Iowa DNR. That's the, would be the enforcement agency for the state. And supposedly, well, it's supposed to be every 10 years we get a permit renewal. And every 10 years, new standards come out. So this last permit renewal required, was two, two parts. Required UV disinfection and nutrient reduction strategy to remove more nitrogen phosphorus from our effluent that goes eventually into nappical waters. So both absolutely important, I think, to the state of Iowa, maybe for it. It's just, it's a challenge. I, you know, I would say that the water that was coming out of our plant prior to some of these changes was, was pretty clean. Who knows? We're going to, we'll probably get down to phase two, the nutrient reduction portion of that, which could be the addition of another clarifier. I don't know how that's going to look quite yet, but we could go for like three or four years beyond that and start a permit, permit renewal again. I've talked to colleagues whose levy rates are going north of $20, just the cities. I've talked to colleagues, I want to say their sewer plant renovations were $60 million.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not great news, it could be infinitely worse news.
Yeah, for sure. And we're going to have, I mean, I'm not, I agree with Paul. I, I don't know that I've done this this year. I don't know what next year looks like. I, I, again, had the meeting with Representative Golding. I said, my, my fear right now is there really is no incentive to grow. We can't capture any of that growth anyway, so I hope this doesn't stymie, you know, us as well. We're still, we have an incredible school district everybody wants to, to be a part of. And we need more housing, hence our, our conversations this week. But yeah, it's a more challenging, but incentives on the table to make that happen when you're going the opposite direction.
Right. I think that the only thing that this should make us think about is what opportunities are there for commercial development? And that type of thing? Especially out by the highway and, you know, working to grow those opportunities that, you know, and maybe look for opportunities that we haven't looked at before.
I will say there are some things that, you know, are potentially on the horizon. I hate to put that, dangling that carrot out in front of you because I can't release the details of it. But there, there is movement up there, which is nice because, again, that just means that we are an attractive community and we're gaining, gaining looks. And I, I do believe if we have willing landowners, that we will be able to see consistent growth, not necessarily fast. I don't think that that's what we want anyway, but consistent growth would be, you know, an excellent opportunity. And I'm looking forward to seeing that unfold. But yeah, there are, we are definitely gaining interest along the Highway 1 30 corridor.
Good discussion.
I'd also like to point out, not that I'm throwing anybody under the bus, but, you know, it's not just us, the school just had to send out a letter, you know, to all residents talking about some of the things that are going on there too. It really is all tax and energy and trying to figure out how to do the most that we can of what we're given.
Let me report this. Couple of things, as we mentioned, is that we're going to catch a local leaders conference in Des Moines on Wednesday this week. Mayors, I think, have been invited to this, so I will head to that. And with Cynthia Charlie, I've got local control. This all goes back to kind of like local control. Paul's argument, very legit, about what we're being faced with, the whole topsoil thing. That becomes, I don't know if that's so active, it may be the second funnel, but where it's going to grow back onto the cities to take care of the developers' topsoil requirements. That's another thing, you know, it's not the same vein as what Paul was talking about earlier, getting grown back to, local control will pay for it, but if I get credit for it. And I'm sure there'll be other things to talk to them about, but I'm going to do that on Wednesday. Thursday, there's a sustainability committee meeting that I'm having. A couple, the new resiliency coordinator will be there and a new Green Island Maricopa person.
and a new Green Island Maricopa person will be there, introduced. And Mark, I'll start a little bit about a legal voters, even sponsored event that was in this room last Wednesday, sustainability.
Yep, so we'll make here. And it was a good turnout, all the seats were filled. So kinda what was stopped that out was the head of the landfill. So just conversations that he's gonna have with us here soon, whenever that pops up. Composting kinda was an issue, and Tom knows a little bit more about that. But talked about prairie and people, people were getting aggressive with some things, wanted to do, do prairie land in their yards and whatnot and topical burning in the city. Don't see that happening, but, you know. So that was one of the, some of the topics. And then there definitely is going to be expectations for no mow May again. In fact, when Gretchen told everybody that, go ahead and do it, told people to do it, in effect. So if we need a plan for that, do something differently or just kinda go along with how we get it passed.
Who was it that decided to stop that? Was it Cedar Rapids?
Uh, there's been a couple of communities that decided to stop it. The last two years, we haven't had anything formally inflates as far as no mow May, but we haven't enforced nuisance weed ordinances during, during the month of May.
And, and have there, have there been any complaints?
Uh, yes, there have. And then, then complaints, and then there is, there's.
The issue in those cities that they got, you know, their complaints really skyrocketed, but.
My understanding is, the, the pushback is, while it sounds like a very novel concept, the benefits of no mow May are still being discussed and, and how significant they really are.
For pollinators and so on. Well, and the other thing is when, when this came up last year, and I don't know if we need to get into a long conversation tonight about this based on what Mark heard in his meeting last week, but, um, one thing that, that I remember reading is that two weeks of no mow May is adequate for the pollinators. So you could say just the first two weeks will be no mow May for us. Just like with our flying our flags, if we flew it for one day or one week, it would meet what the spirit of.
Roughly till the dandelion blooms, basically when they're seeding, that's about when you should be mowing at that point. Cause that's giving the pollinators enough time.
I would say to offer encouragement to, to that organization, I, I do believe that if you look at some of the new subdivisions where you have detention basins and of course in Stone Brook, that entire corridor that runs up the center of that subdivision, you're going to get zero complaints from public works if we figure out a way to do, you know, a pollinator buffer strip through there that they don't have to mow on a regular basis.
Wildfire, prairie, prairie grass, as Mark points out, if you're going to have true prairie grass, you're gonna have to burn it once a year, so.
We, we do run into that in the dark park. We do have, if you've been there, we have a small patch of what I would consider prairie that we can't burn, that we mow, and it is, you know, it consistently seeds thorns and thistles, things that aren't conducive to. So, I, yeah, I would say there's, there's room to make some of that happen.
Okay, anything else to share? Anybody else in the other council, committee reports?
Tom, well, you're in Des Moines on Wednesday, I will be at the childcare meeting this Wednesday.
And I did tell, I, I reserved the space, but I told him that I would have to be there. Thank you for attending that.
And then we just, the day before that, we just had the streetscape meeting, was well attended. I think the businesses are, business owners are very happy and optimistic about being a part of it. I think this overall JVO combined with Lori is really so far so good, because we're getting our first steps in the first.
Yeah, it was a big turnout. We're getting a lot of good, good feedback. I've been anxious to see when we get, you know.
Actually into it. Like right now, the, the thought of it is fairly well received, but it'll be interesting once we get that design back, what, what people feel about that, that it's.
I, I felt too that, that some of the items that we talked about as far as concerns are there. And it was warranted to kind of take our time with this project, you know, there are definitely some business owners that had concerns about, you know, the level of investment that they're putting in their business and the fact that they couldn't afford it to be shut down for a period of time and.
And that was discussed a lot about at that meeting, and I was, I mean, it was, like I said, I think most of it was really well received by business owners. I'm looking forward to move forward with that and see where we go.
Well, thank you though, Lori, for you and Joe going door to door.
That was actually fun. I really enjoyed that, cause I don't, I don't know a lot of the business owners personally, so that was really good for me to, to go meet people and just, you know.
And the relationship between human beings requires good communication, and the best way to have that communication is face to face, so you and Joe did that, so.
Hundred percent, that was, that was fun.
Well done.
Well, you said, how many businesses? We have seven here lately.
Upwards of seventy.
Yeah, I mean, and sometimes you don't realize we have that many.
You really don't. I mean, I didn't realize there were six of them down in the Cobble Banker Building, the East Town and Country. I had no idea there were six of them there. So, that was, it was good for education for me too.
Any else to report on?
I went to a retirement celebration for Amy White, who is a non-employed, who works for the Lisbon Library, worked there for thirty some years, I guess. And one of the great things about Amy was how she recognized the need for after-school programs because there were so many kids coming into the library. And that generated, you know, when, when I was on the Southeastland Board, after-school programs to happen there at Southeastland and other things that she recognized for Southeastland. And the fact that Southeastland does serve both communities, so appreciate what Amy has contributed to both communities.
All right. This is, uh, this is, well, this is.
What are you gonna say?
I grew up calling downtowns downtowns, and I must be.
We've already had this discussion.
The absolute minority, so.
It's so fantastic.
So you'll notice in my, you're, you're always going to be able to tell who wrote the board, because I will say downtown and Lori will say uptown.
And the rest of the entire community will say uptown.
One top graphical look will tell you it's correct.
It's rather ironic because A, the meaning which is.
Oh, and you said elevation today, that was actually stated that elevation.
He said a foot earlier too, did you catch that?
Did you just see him? He said, did you see it?
I've heard all of the articles.
It is Mount Vernon, it's the Vernon Valley.
Well, it was Penn Hook. A little nugget for you there.
It was Penn Hook.
It would ain't me, which is about as flat as you can get, has an uptown.
Manhattan is the Lower East Side, the Upper East Side, and you gotta go uptown and downtown and.
Do you know what we're saying?
You know, it's an easy skill check.
It's not hard to just find a control of, find replace.
I just can't.
Do it.
And now I was.
Do I know when I go to the town center, I'm going up.
And you know what? Just out of spite, he will never call it uptown, because of his listening. It's not one time.
Is there anything else?
If anybody else is wondering, yes, we'd be along quite well a year later.
There we are, we are adjourned.